Okay.
Okay, all members are present and accounted for. Uh, we're gonna start with communication items.
All right.
Hand in order our superintendent. And through the reports.
And we'll invite our elementary school principal up and uh, I'll pull up her presentation, her notes for everybody to take with them as well. Good evening. Couple of highlights to bring to you all here that we're now in April. I can tell you the weather makes the difference. Um, one of the items I have on here is recess. I'm gonna jump down to that one. Um, students and staff have just been doing an extremely great job, uh, being patient. We have that beautiful playground over at the elementary school that we are unable to use right now, um, with the thawing out and the refreezing. So we pivot and turn and we monitor and adjust each day. Where can we get kids outside to play? Um, and so we've had a lot of creativity and flexibility, um, in providing those safe spaces kids can play. Um, and a special shout out to our parent professionals because they are the ones that are, um, changing and moving, uh, day by day. So just wanted to say thank you to them. Going back up to the top, uh, Celebrate March Assembly. We gathered together, um, as a, as a whole wide school and, um, presented our cash donation and over, um, two thousand three hundred pounds of food to the Painesville Community Service Center. And that was such a neat experience. That was my first experience, um, working alongside Allison and, uh, seeing the facility over there. Um, definitely is heartwarming with everything that staff, students, and families brought forward, um, whether it be food or, or cash to support and to give back to our own community. During that March celebration, we also recognized, um, music in our schools. We had a nice performance from our secondary band and choir students and that was great. Um, there was a point in time where I looked out at the crowd and everybody was kind of tapping their foot or going along to the music and, um, that was well received. And thank you for the, the students and to our music teachers for sharing their passion and talents with us that day. Um, as you know, um, students throughout Minnesota will be participating in the MCA's, the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment, in the areas of reading, math, and science. And so that is, um, what we are gearing up for starting tomorrow. Um, and that's really, it's a snapshot and I just want to reiterate that to the board and into the public that it's a snapshot of, of our learning. It's not the be all and all. It doesn't define a student. We know our students possess many great qualities and, um, our teachers provide many, um, learning experiences beyond reading, math, and science. Uh, but I often get questions about, well, how do we use these results, right? What do we do with them? And so I just kind of gave you a bulleted list there. Um, that it is a snapshot. It is, you know, one piece of our body of evidence of student learning. Um, we look at how are we measuring our academic standards locally and then throughout the state? Um, you know, as educators, we make instructional decisions based on, um, how students are doing with our MCA's. Um, and it's a way for us to monitor student growth. We just wanted to mention that those are right around the corner. Um, our teachers have spent some time just having students become familiarized with the testing platform to alleviate that, that stress and that unknown. Um, because for third graders coming in, that looks different for them. I talked about recess, uh, student recognition. We've got some more million word readers. Elena Akerson and Myla Maher received their certificates recently. And, um, last time I mentioned Lydia, um, without a picture. So at the bottom, I did include her picture. I thought that was important for her to get recognized that way as well. Uh, looking ahead, I can't believe we're mid-April. Um, we are rounding third base. We're on our way on the home stretch there. We have our second grade music program that the public is welcome to attend April 20th at 2:00 PM here in the auditorium. We have our sixth grade orientation and registration, working closely with, um, Principal Orline and his crew, getting our fifth graders ready to make that transition next year. Uh, we're working on class lists and master schedule. Uh, May 5th, we have an in-service coming up for professional development, working on letters and some other items as well. So the pictures at the bottom, um, also included, um, the band performance and then our donation that we, uh, gave to the community center. And then the bottom was one of my favorites. I was walking through the hallways late last week and it was all of a sudden, spring was in our hallways. We had some penguins on the left wall. We had some baby chicks on the right wall. But I thought it was pretty neat to see, um, you know, the, the crafts and the art, um, that students are doing in their classrooms and it just was uplifting. So I had to capture that and share that with all of you. Questions for me at this time? All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, and I, I'm having some technical issues. Um, I'm not entirely sure why. Um, I can't pull up, um, the documents to cast and share. They're coming up gibberish. Um, my keyboard stopped working moments before the meeting. So, um, all of these documents are going to be linked into the minutes. So if somebody is watching and they wanna see what was referenced, click on the hyperlink and they'll be able to see, um, the information that's referenced. So I apologize for, um, I'm not quite sure what happened, but we'll, we'll roll with it. All right. Um, next we'll invite up David Orline, our secondary school principal, and see what's happening at the secondary.
All right, good evening. Um, I just wanna give you a graduation update, uh, because of, um, the board will be participating in that, in the graduation ceremony. And, and in May, I'll give you a, um, kind of a layout on what things will look like. Um, so last, a week and a half ago, a graduation letter went home to families. And, um, so the graduation ceremony is gonna be June 4th at 2:00 and that will be in the pack this year. Climate control and, uh, I'm working with Jeremy Schmidt right now to make sure that, uh, the sound is gonna be right and what the layout of the, of the pack is gonna be. Um, last year, I don't know if you, I remember this, but, uh, you know, like two days before the ceremony, it was like a forty percent chance of thunderstorms and we're wondering what we're gonna do. And having it in the pack just provides us with some stability and, um, a beautiful lobby area for gathering. And, and so, uh, we're excited about that and we're working with Community Ed to make that a great experience. We have fifty-eight graduates, uh, that are gonna be going through the, the plan is that they're gonna be going through the ceremony this year. Uh, one thing that came out of, of COVID, uh, was the car parade. And so we are, we're continuing that. I think this is our fourth year with that and, um, the, the route will be kind of the same. Um, I'm gonna be working with, uh, the police department on finalizing that. Uh, senior yard signs. Uh, we, we weren't able to do this last year because of a, just a communication issue. But, uh, so our staff purchased, we have signs for, um, for our graduates in their yards and the staff purchased them and then they, they personally deliver them. And so they're here. Um, I'm guessing that some of them will be delivered yet this week, but in the next week or two, they should all be taken care of. Uh, Backlaurian is set for May 21st at 4:00. And Grace United Methodist Church is the host. And then, uh, Honors Banquet is at 6:00 that same evening. And we do that, last year was the first year we did it in the cafeteria and we had a, a wonderful meal. We kind of dress it up and then, um, and then we go into the auditorium for the program. Uh, new this year, we are working on a Dollars for Scholars Breakfast. And it will be, um, tentatively scheduled for Friday, May 19th. We've never done anything separate like that before, so it'll, it'll really just be a, um, probably about a half hour long. And we're gonna invite as many of the, um, of the scholarship representatives as we, as we can. And then we'll have the recipients there and so that they can, uh, meet too. We can announce names and then, um, so that'll, we're still working out some details on that. Any questions about graduation, that process?
Will you still announce Dollars for Scholars at graduation?
Uh, we haven't announced that for like five or six years now. We have it in the, we have it in the, in the program though.
Okay, I remember it in the program.
Yeah. And then the senior signs, uh, we do have one that's, uh, a parent that lives in Texas and I have, uh, the district won't pay for a, a flight for me to go down and deliver that one, but.
He can drive.
And then on, on April 26th, we have, uh, the mock car crash, which will be in the, in the, uh, south parking lot. And so that, there won't be any parking in that lot for the entire day. We have a helicopter coming in and things. And, and that is organized by SAD and Jen Andrist is the advisor for that. And they put a lot of, a lot of work into that. And then also at the high school, uh, tomorrow, we begin the MCA testing and we do it on three consecutive Wednesdays. And so we'll finish up, um, with the science for grades eight to ten in, uh, three weeks. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, um, I have our Activities Director update. Let's see if this one will come on up. Nope, it won't. We'll just do the, we'll do the little one and I'll read it for you. Jeepers. Yeah, we're gonna just keep, I'll just read it. All right. So our school board, our, uh, Activities Director, um, sent an update saying, "I'm currently on my way to Saint Cloud State University where our track and field teams are competing in the, in the field house against three other schools." Um, yeah, our Activities Director, um, is an assistant coach for, or a JV coach for our baseball team. So he really wanted to take an opportunity to go see the track team when he was able to. So, uh, "We're finally on the verge of spring activities, being in full swing. I know our students, coaches, parents, and community members are itching to get outdoors. Having the facilities we do have provided us so many opportunities for practice to be ready for competition. Being indoors for four weeks of practicing and outdoor activity is not always easy, but our players and coaches have continued to work hard and remain positive about the situation Mother Nature has put us in. Our band and choir have concerts that are, they are preparing for in May. Ninth through 12th grade choir performs on May 8th. Uh, sixth through 12th grade band concert is on May 15th and sixth through eighth grade choir is on May 22nd. A busy spring season will be even more action packed with the weather. We have, uh, we have had crunching competition dates closing together. We'll update our activities calendar as any changes occur and have Miranda share those updates on our social media platforms. Unfortunately, there are times where dates are just not open, but we work to find other options as much as we can. If there are any people in the community who would be interested in umpiring at any levels for baseball or softball, reach out to Rick. Um, he would like to thank our custodians for blowing off the fields, track, and up at the stadium. That allows our teams to get outdoors sooner with those surfaces being ready for action. Go Bulldogs." So any questions, you can certainly reach out to Rick and, uh, and he would circle back with anything that you need. Um, with that, I will invite up our Community Education Director, Chris. Come on up.
All right. Hi, good evening. All right, so we've been busy at Community Ed. Um, I'll start with the pack. Obviously, the athletics have been using that space and now that it's nice outside, they're moving outdoors. Um, we do anticipate that our walkers and some of our pickleball players might also move outdoors. So we'll, as they start to move outdoors, we'll start to see if we can fill up our pack with summer activities. So that's what we're working on is the athletic camps, the, um, uh, workout times, the, everything that they use the pack for in the, in the summertime. We also, apparently last year, there were some area schools that had school age care programs that would, um, that have used the pack and come to the community as a field trip. So we're contacting some of those schools and see if they wanna set that up for this summer. They would start at the pack, play some activities, and then they would go over to the splash parrot, the splash pad and, uh, have picnic and, and put there. So it's kind of interesting that, uh, Painesville is a destination for field trips. So I'm, we're working, we're working with that. Um, we had a number of events last month. We had a tournament, um, and Center Care had a private event. They loved it. They, I, um, they had a great time and it was nice exposure because many, there are a lot of people that work there, but don't necessarily know much about our, the community center. So it was, it was a good event. Um, things are flowing down as far as events. So one of them that's this month is the after prom party. And, uh, so we will close the gyms, uh, the 29th and 30th so that they can get that all set up. Um, for Community Ed, we're at our catalog, hopefully coming out here at the end of April. Um, we're meeting with, we're trying to get those last minute details. We're meeting with coaches and programs and instructors and organizations to get their, get all of their details set up into their, into that program. So we're, we're just about done with that catalog and getting ready to send it to the printer. We have some new programs this year. We have the Drone, uh, Drone and RC Wars class for grades three through eight. Uh, I have a new instructor that has agreed to teach some camps. So we call them adventure camps and that's for pre-K through sixth grade. So we have some really cool classes like, uh, you know, messy art and, you know, um, sprawling scientists. So it should be fun, uh, some fun new programs that we have brought in. And a third one that we're looking at doing the, a little sports sampler for ages two to four, just, uh, sport themed. We're not doing elite athletes with our two-year-olds, but just some sport themed stuff that parents can bring their kids to. Um, we had our registration for preschool and our summer class program. I think it went relatively smooth. We didn't have a lot of phone, negative phone calls, so that's good. Um, there were a few, a few glitches that we were able to just, uh, talk with our trader and, and work through so we can, uh, make it a better experience for everyone. There are, lost my place, fifty-one four-year-olds registered right now, placed in program and twenty-one three-year-olds. We have one three-year-old on waiting list because they wanted a two-day program. So our two-day program for three-year-olds is tentatively full right now. It is April, things change, but, um, those are full as of now. So we have one three-year-old on the waiting list. We have room in our Friday program for additional three-year-olds. Um, summer pause programs has fifty-one students registered so far. I think people are waiting for that summer catalog to come out so they can set up their, their summers and then they'll, we anticipate probably about a hundred kids coming in and out of that program. Um, we are continuing our LEO training. We will launch that for fall for all of our CE classes, school age care and early childhood classes as well as for facility. So it will be fully used in the fall. Um, for pause and preschool, we're still, we're, we're still working on those handbooks and policies and trying to streamline our, that information for parents and so that we match up with what's going on with the school district. So we're still, that is still a work in progress. Um, we have up the playground, preschool playground. Um, we are, we have a committee of people working on, on different areas, fundraising, um, putting the plan together for getting something ready to do, um, a presentation. My question, would you like a presentation here at this, uh, before we go out into the communities?
At some point.
Yes, okay. So I will set that up and, and we'll have, um, someone from that team come out and do a, a presentation. Perfect. And last, I do, I just put in some community connections in because I do sit on a number of other boards. Um, I met with Randy Schaefer from the Painesville Community Foundation and he is, uh, putting together, he's trying to pull some people together to have some conversations around collaboration, around collaborating for youth development or, um, special events, um, anything Painesville, quite frankly. And trying to find out what every, all these different groups are doing and can we work together to do that? So I'll be part of that coffee and conversation group, um, when we get that put together. Uh, the Painesville Chamber, I sit on their board. Well, I'm not a board member, but I sit in on their meetings. And they have a number of, as you know, many events that they'll be putting up, especially here this summer. So we're just assisting them wherever we can, whether that's for the Miss Painesville pageant and trying to get our auditorium ready, um, along with advertising and, you know, square our Community Ed can, can assist. Uh, I met my first meeting with the Green Roof area. Their new programmers are very excited about what they're doing and we're hoping to collaborate some programs and, and build, build on what they've already got going on. And last, I do, I, uh, the Arts Council, which is mainly our, our, um, band, choir, art teacher, drama. Um, they're hosting a talent show on the April 22nd. I'm sure you've seen the posters everywhere. And, uh, um, so I, um, I do sit in on that meeting to just see where we can help around arts. That is it.
I have a question about pickleball.
Yes.
You said they're going outside. We don't have anything in town for them to do outside.
You don't have outdoor pickleball courts?
I don't believe we do. I didn't know if there's any way the tennis courts could be, it could be lined for pickleball. There's just no place for people to go.
Yeah, and that's, um, are you gonna talk about that?
Okay, okay.
It's been on the radar. Yep, it's been on the radar.
Okay.
We can draw some lines in the parking lot.
I'm sure they've.
In the potholes.
Cars for nets.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right.
Great.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, with that, I will invite Ken, um, come on up and give us a Buildings and Grounds update. Now that you got your feet wet or you're in up over your nose, you know.
No evacuation?
No, none of that.
That was enough.
Yeah, that was enough.
So, um, top of the list, I wanna talk about the football lights, what I found out because I know it was brought up that we wanted to look into LED out there as long as we have an issue and so on and so forth. And, uh, it's very expensive. Uh, they're talking probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a pole. So, and then they said total cost five hundred, so that does, the math doesn't work out, but it's close. So I, and, uh, they said that, uh, Cold Spring had just done theirs a year and a half ago and that one ran them. They did the poles and everything. They could put it on these poles that are wood yet. That ran them about almost six hundred, uh, six hundred thousand just for the LED project of that. So that is very expensive. Um, but with that, I also talked with Tom Haynes and them light bulbs have been replaced. So they are the mercury bulbs. They are running about one-fifth the power of the originals that were out there. So that happened, Tom was guessing fifteen years ago, somewhere in that line. He said, "So the power lines that are out there should be well significant enough to run the lights that are out there." So with that, so, um, one ended up, we've got a couple of different ways we wanna maybe think about going about this. I haven't pulled the trigger, obviously, on any of it. So we've got Design Electric with the softball complex. They had kind of must have been involved in that last year or whatever, said, "Maybe we should just dig a hole and fix the break." And then we're gonna move them softball fields, which is in the plan. Then dig new wires, he says, "Cause they are old, fragile, the whole ball of wax. But then at least we'd be here, we could go, you know, probably save some money doing it that way in the long run if, you know, that project is gonna go on." Wilmer Electric's still trying to get us another quote for that, so on and so forth, so, uh.
So let me just, um, so some, some board members, this is new information because this was discussed at the Facilities Committee. So the Facilities Committee had asked and to get some background information on, um, if we're going to look at lighting, what does it cost to just update and do like some of these big things? So a lot of what Ken has been doing is all of that research to kind of, from where the Facilities Committee kind of said, "What's the charge?" And so that's where some of these things are. So board members, if you're wondering kind of where that's coming from, that's where that's coming from. Okay?
Um, I am getting another quote from another company on the LED that actually works with that, uh, Xcel Energy. So with rebates, hopefully they know more about the rebates product of that. So that has not come in yet, so I have no idea what that's gonna be. But, um, moving forward, uh, you know, with the Facilities meeting, that, uh, with the softball upgrade, I'm really looking forward to getting involved in some communication with that and, uh, discussion with Janelle and just getting, starting basically over. So we're gonna hopefully wash our hands of the other contract that we were in and so on and so forth, that we start over. Um, that sort of deal. Moving on to the tennis courts. So a lot of discussions. So I know Dee Johnson was big into that a couple of years ago, whenever it was. She's kinda said she'd like to wash her hands from it. She doesn't really wanna proceed at all. She will help vouch, she'll sit on committees and so on, but she doesn't wanna lead anything, so on and so forth. I know we had, in our discussion, it was a four-way, you know, the school, city, township, and then the tennis club. And, uh, talking with Dunnick, they, they did the quote and I had talked with him and he, he said pickleball's getting so big, you know, they are popping up all over. Wilmer just put one up. Um, he said we should keep all four and make two of them strictly pickleball. But he also wants two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to just put the tar surface down, something like that. So that's a little bit hard to chew as well.
So more to come on that.
So more to come on that. Um, and, and I know it gets used from where I live. I do see tennis players out there and they were out there last year from where I live. And that, I, you know, I've, I've been going out there daily hoping that the snow is leaving. It seems like that doesn't want to. And I do see a lot of huge cracks. They're two inches wide right now, so I know that surface is not in good shape.
So just to add, to piggyback on that a little bit, um, there was a, a group that met a couple of times over the course of the last year. Um, and, um, when the pack was built, there, the intention really was to provide an, a space for community members to be playing tennis and pickleball. Um, a lot of pickleballers like to play outside in the summer, so that's why they approached, um, us at the school about, um, renovating or updating the fields or the tennis courts. Um, the, really the, um, the way that this discussion ended was to split the cost and if everybody kind of can come up with their portion, we could then entertain a conversation around, because that's our facility, obviously. We would be responsible for maintaining it. So then what would that look like? And, um, and so, um, you know, I think that's something that we need to continue to explore, whether it would be to, whether it would be for, some of the reasons for the, the crackage of those tennis courts are the trees that are on the facility. So if we don't address that as an issue, it's going to continue to just be a problem. So there's a number of reasons that we would want to consider doing less versus more. Um, but more to come on that. And, and if the, if the tennis group is re-engaged in fundraising, I know, um, we've had a conversation with the city, um, with, and re-approaching the city and the township now that it's been, um, really the big thing is after, when the referendum was, um, didn't pass last year, um, I, we just really couldn't carry on conversation forward about allocating funds for, um, for the tennis court when we have space in the pack. So there's a little bit of history back there too.
Yeah, even with, you know, that total like Janelle was saying, she hit the nail on the head. I mean, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put the surface down was a one lump sum and then the school is still ultimately responsible for keeping that up year in and year out. So we gotta factor that all in. Um, so, and I did get, uh, diagrams of pickleball courts. You could put actually, uh, two, uh, two pickleball courts on each tennis court. So you use the, actually the net as a back wall and then the fence and it's actually on the same side, so on and so forth. I did get a whole bunch of drawings for that if, if it's, which direction we wanna go. So, um, I know, uh, David touched base last time about, about them, uh, display cases down there. We did get them all finished up. I don't know if you had time to look at them. Uh, the students did a real nice job on that. I didn't make them go and fix one, but.
I was in a one day, not sure to speak crap.
Um, and with that, the student center as well, they've been working on that. The rest of the material's coming. It's been on back order. When the arts, uh, should be here the end of the month is what I'm hearing now. So, um, we're prepared with the snow being gone now. We should be able to move forward on that, get in and analyze and see what the basis on that. So that'll be coming here within the next meeting. So, and then, uh, basically I have, I started looking at our door four. What we wanna do there, they are in really tough shape. That was, used to be the main interest of the school, so we're gonna start looking at that sort of stuff. So, anything else for me?
All right.
Thank you.
Like I said, not just, uh, sticking his toes in the water, he's, he's up to his nose. So thank you, I appreciate you digging in.
Okay, we move on to the, uh, strategic plan.
All right. So I'm gonna see if there's any possibility that this pulls up. It does not. Um, so. It does not. Um so if if we can, um there's, I guess, a couple of pieces that um all board members have their their um their computers in front of them. So you can kind of walk through this with me. Um so the strategic plan um was developed. It's the the planning began in twenty twenty, um and it was, I believe it was in February of twenty twenty. And then um we all know that in March of twenty twenty, we kind of hit a hiatus. Um and there was um some significant slowdown to the strategic planning process. Um but ultimately, there was from February of twenty twenty until about January of twenty um until about January of, sorry, February of, those dates are on, but that can't be right. The final stakeholder sessions concluded in January of twenty twenty. Um and the plan that's that is here that we're gonna walk through does contain information from stakeholders. Um I think part of what was um difficult is some of those sessions, they occurred via Zoom when families weren't able to participate in a traditional way. So I don't know if that impacted um participation or if it didn't. Uh but ultimately, the the plan that we're gonna walk through today is really a culmination of that work that took place um by board members, staff, students, um and community members. Um so the vision, uh Payne's Willery Schools is preparing students to succeed in an ever-changing world by nurturing and developing natural curiosity, creating critical thinkers and problem solvers who possess dynamic academic skills that maximize their potential and build the foundation of responsible, ethical, and compassionate members of our community. So that's what the the vision of the strategic plan was. Um and that really then led into the mission. And I I believe that the mission has not changed significantly over the course of years as I look at where it was to where it is in the strategic plan. Um but the mission of the Payne's Willery Schools is to prepare students with the academics, social, and personal skills to succeed in their career and community. You know, when when I think about kind of the work that we do, it encompasses really who we are and what we are as a as a school district. Um you'll see that the purpose has been characterized by the stakeholders. These are the things that they look for is engaged students, confident and competent learners, well-rounded opportunities for kids, a safe learning environment, supportive school structures, strong work ethic, and real-world skills. So when I think about some of the things that I've seen happening over the course of my time and just before in Payne's Willery uh in the school district, it aligns to those areas. Um so so then the next portion of the strategic plan is to kind of step back and look at, okay, how is that gonna happen? What are the specific goals in each of these areas? So um the goals, there's three focal areas and three points of um I guess focus for the strategic plan. The first is around growth, um and and growth really is prioritizing growth as an organization, um maximizing student and staff growth on a daily basis, measured through a holistic approach grounded in an equitable, diverse, and inclusive environment that includes the following elements. So there's three subsets of that first goal. So emotional and physical wellness, intellectual wellness, and social wellness. So as we dig into each of the the next portions of the strategic plan, we're gonna look at what types of activities go along with each of those areas, right? So within emotional and physical wellness, resiliency, stress management, exercise and activity, and healthy choices were subsets of emotional and physical wellness. Intellectual wellness was literacy development, curiosity and creativity, critical thinking and engagement. And then social wellness contains social support, relationships, mentor-advisee, and global citizenship. So um board members who were part of this process, is there anything that you want to add to that first growth area from a comment or or comments that were maybe part of that discussion? The next area that was um I guess the next goal area is around communication. Payne's Willery Schools recognizes the importance of clear, concise, and transparent communication. So we've talked a lot as at the board table around how are we communicating with our community? And are we reaching all the stakeholders? You know, sometimes we have, we have a lot of social media presence. Um but what about families that aren't on social media? How are we reaching those families? Um what are the things that we're doing to make sure that our message gets into various platforms, right? So the district shall foster multi-mode communication to engage and inform all community members, students, and families on school district-related issues. So that was the second goal, goal pretty um pretty straightforward. But we're gonna look at all the activities that have been part of this as we move through the strategic plan, too. So um the final goal is.
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
So my issue there is um I know it centers to students and families, but in the first sentence, it talks about for all stakeholders.
Yep.
And I know that discussion's coming up for all the people that are in this community that are retired, not knowing what's going on here, all of that. And the only time they hear from us is when we're asking for money.
Okay.
Um and I think that uh becomes a detriment to us, because they don't know all the things. I think if you took a list of all the really good things we do, maybe even better than areas around us, the list would be so big, you couldn't list it on a on a few sheets of paper. It's gonna take a lot. We do lots of good things, but getting to the stakeholders is a big deal for me. It kind of waters down in the next sentence, because it centers then a little more with the students and families, but it does say all community members.
The all community members is before the students and families. Yeah. But I hear what you're saying, and and it's it's important that people know what we're doing um at all times, not just when we're going out for a referendum. Yep.
And I think the next question is how would we do that? And I think there are some ways of doing it, which we have to discuss at some point.
Sure.
But I've got some ideas on how we could reach those people who don't necessarily read the press or go on social media.
Sure.
There are ways to get out there and reach a lot of people.
Sure. Um and then as we as we dig into kind of the the strategy, the strategies and tactics, we're gonna talk a little bit more about some of the things that have been done. Um and then we can identify some things to continue to do. Um and then the third goal is uh financial allocation and fiscal stewardship. Um so Payne's Willery Schools recognizes fiscal resources are finite. Uh resources will be allocated to fill goals, fulfill goals and objectives of the strategic plan. And in accordance to all relevant and uh state and federal statutes and rules. Additionally, Payne's Willery Schools strives to reinvent service delivery models to maximize the district's return on investment. And I think that's something that um when I look at some of the programming that um uh the the district has prioritized. When you look at some of the career and technical education programming, you look at the Innovation Center, you look at the investment in um our our letters initiative. Those are things that are are to bring a return on investment. And so um I think those are some good examples of of I guess evidence of that goal.
So how are we measuring that right now?
So we're gonna get into that next.
Okay.
Okay? So if you move into the.
So so the measurement is a part of the the beginning here, where is this holistic view? And we're gonna measure it through that and equitable and versus that's not part of number three?
Um number one, number two, and number three are separate bullets.
All separate bullets. Okay, got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so if you scroll down into the next portion of the strategic plan, and you'll notice that the page layout changes. So the first, the the strategies and tactics, so for growth one or growth, goal one, growth, you're gonna see there's one, two, three, four, five different strategies that have been identified with action steps, um a a recommended start date, ideal completion date, identification of resources needed, and then accountable for progress. Okay? So taking a look at that first goal, providing socially and emotionally curriculum opportunities in all grade levels at Payne's Willery Schools, that was a subset of that first goal. Okay, so what did that look like? So if you look at the next column over, action steps, and then the seven mindsets curriculum. Okay, so K twelve having opportunities for kids to um understand, know, learn through the seven mindsets curriculum, which is a socially-emotional learning curriculum. Develop and expand um system-wide positive behavior intervention and supports. So in some of these, Gerald, when we go through the strategic plan tracker, I'll show you how some of that movement has taken place.
Okay.
Um and the measurement of of how they've evolved from um exploration to implementation to um follow on where we're at. Okay? Um developing robust professional development activities for all school staff members to maximize their potential. So you'll see um for the individuals who have been part of the Staff Development Committee, aligning the Staff Development Committee work and expectations to the strategic plan. Um one of the things that you're gonna recognize and see is that we've talked a lot in in intellectual wellness, literacy development. We have a a substantial and expansive letters initiative that's been moving through. A significant amount of time has been dedicated to the Letters Initiative for Professional Development from um the first year of implementation to the second and third and so on. Okay? Um you'll see um identifying professional development to promote learner empowerment. Um and the third uh the third subset that breaks from the first page to the second page of the strategies and tactics. Um developing of professional learning communities that target wellness pillars. Um that's something that we have continued work that we need to do. Um and I'll talk a little bit about some areas that I think we could explore um to develop those pillars that haven't, we haven't done yet. So again, as a reminder, this is a three-year plan. So there are things that we're we've touched on, we're doing, and our implementation. And there's things that we are continuing the foundational exploration, digging in, moving forward um of the plan. You'll see that um some of the um resources that are needed to develop the professional development is um having individuals uh teach our staff about um deep learning. What is deep learning? Um having speakers that would help to promote that work. Yearly school calendars that are robust with pro- professional development time. You know, you I know that there's been a lot of discussion about the PD days and the in-service time, but this is why. Because there's been a lot of focus and emphasis that our staff, if we're going to have expectations for them to do some of this work, we have to allocate time and resources for them to do it. So that's one of the things that's in here as a resource, is you'll see that it has time um as a time and built-in practices for professional development. Um taking a look at um number three, develop local learning expectations that focus on all areas of wellness for all learners. So this is an area that we have not touched on a whole lot yet. Um as I said, we've been focusing a lot of time and effort on um the literacy initiatives. Um there's a a really sound um it's it's a collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning that is is really uh research-based strategies to understand, um help our students and work through not only the academic excellence that they need, but taking a look at that social and emotional learning as well. Um so those are some things that we we have not yet touched on, um and I think are things that we have to continue to do some work on. Um you'll see that part of that is to create and implement local emotional um emotional and physical wellness standards, activities, and evaluation tools. To your point, Gerald, we don't have a measurement for that yet, because they haven't been developed. Okay?
Good.
Um operationalize a four-year plan at the secondary school and um and family groups at the elementary school. So you've heard over the course of the last couple of years, conversation about our family groups and what those are and how they work. Um at the secondary, the the um the uh connect time has really been an opportunity to provide students with a chance to connect with adults in a different way um on kind of their own terms in an activity that is something that they enjoy and they want to learn through. And it also provides our adults an opportunity to teach in a platform that's that's maybe their passion in a different way. Um and I think as we've worked through, I mean, are there are there hiccups that we have to work through with both of them? For sure. Um but I think I think when you look at the work that has been happening in those in both family groups and through advisory and connect time, um I I think there's a lot of benefit that's happening through those activities that support this work of our strategic plan. Um the fourth one is develop specific and intentional system-wide equitable learning targets that foster deep learning. So one thing that we've not talked a lot about, and and I guess this is maybe an area where I need to understand how much the board knows about what a capstone project is. But um it one of the things that was talked about was um for creating regular opportunities for uh capstone projects throughout our kindergarten through twelfth-grade system. So um when I think about and I hear a capstone project, it's kind of a an ongoing representation of their learning. And it cumulatively builds so that they can demonstrate how they've grown as students from elementary to that middle school to that high school experience. Um you'll see that there's a a discussion about grade band learning plans for students. So that's gonna be doing some of the the sequencing, scope and sequence and um and time for our staff to work through what happens at the the um fifth grade level. And then what happens at the sixth grade level, what are the key things that our fifth graders need to know that they absolutely have to have when they come in as sixth graders? And then our sixth grade teachers know, here's where we start and here's how we build. So that's some of that um that um longitudinal work that happens from kindergarten through twelfth grade. But looking at it um as a looking at it from systematically moving from grade level to grade level, not just across second grade classrooms, first grade classrooms, or ninth grade um math. Okay? Um you'll see that there's um the curricular offerings and community partnerships that promote pathways. So you've heard uh Mr. Orline talk a little bit about pathways for our students to really help them see and understand. Uh if I want to go into the medical field, what might be some of the courses that I could take that would help support my path into the medical field? So as a, for instance, we have our our CNA class that is offered. So if a student wants to begin their work as a, maybe they want to be in become a nurse, or they want to become a a doctor, or they want to become a nurse practitioner, they can start as a CNA and have that coursework here. They can begin that work after they've come through their course here. Similarly, we have our Human Body Systems, um HBS class, if I say that right. I think it is HBS. Um but again, those courses, what are the courses that align if somebody wants to move into the healthcare field? Similarly, we have pathways that are aligned for students that maybe they want, they would like to explore a career in the trades. So what does that look like? Maybe they start their their ninth grade class um doing exploring, uh moving beyond exploring the Innovation Center to um a woods class or a lathe class, or doing some different work in the automotive center, right? But those are the, that's some of the work that when you heard David talk about the pathways, that's some of that work is aligning so that the the students can look at. Um if I want to, if I think I might have interest in becoming X, Y, or Z, here are some classes that might give me some experience and exposure. The most important thing, I think, within that is that it does not lock stock or barrel any kid to anything. But it helps provide them guidance and structure if they want to move in a specific path. Right? Um and then that's also where you're gonna see the design and profile of a graduate that we're gonna talk about in a little bit. The fifth one is to intentionally develop relationships within our system and community that promote socially-emotional, physical, and intellectual wellness. So you're gonna see um we have a lot of very strategic community partnerships, and I think that that's been done very well. We have um our community foundation has provided great support for our our career technical education programming. Um we have a wonderful partnership with our colleges to bring in opportunities like our college and the schools. And some of those, those are very strategic partnerships. Um I know that um obviously you guys wouldn't know the number of of communications that we get, but like from from um Lewis Industries asking, how can we, you know, can we have conversation with your students so that we could maybe create a partnership where they could come in and they could learn and and have a job opportunity? Or so there's there's really strategic conversations that take place about engaging our community members so that they know, our students know what's out there. But I think that partnership is equally important for us to understand what are the skills what are the skills and the attributes that you need from our students if they want to come to your workforce or come into your field or come into your, excuse me, come into your business, right? So those are some of the things that are, that are part of that. We've talked about, I, I know David and Cassie both talked about the, the transition from middle school to high school, being very purposeful and mindful in how that happens so that kids have a, a better experience. We know that sometimes that can be a big change going from elementary school to the middle school. And especially when our, our high school and middle school are in the same building, that can be pretty intimidating and overwhelming for some of those kids who were the big, they were the big kids in the building and now they come in and they're very much not. So how do we make them comfortable and how do we make sure that they, they know how to access everything? They know about their classes and, and really are responsive to what those kids need. As an example, one of the things that I'll kind of highlight here is that, you know, we heard the, the block schedule was a, a big discussion as to whether or not, what is gonna be the success of that and how is that going to be? And is that gonna be an area that's gonna just, is it gonna work, right? We heard feedback from parents about, I, I don't, I'm worried about my child not having an academic class every day, all day, all year long. So maybe it's math or maybe it's reading or maybe it's. So the, the administration was able to sit down and take a look at how do they structure that middle school schedule so the kids that are coming into sixth grade have a more continuous instructional model that's familiar to what they had, but it transitions into what's really successful at that, at the high school level with a more consistent or traditional block schedule. So those are some things that, that happen, all kind of driven through the strategic plan, okay? So then we'll move into communication. And I won't spend quite as much time, that's probably our, our heftiest goal because there's a, that's the most, that's the most student-focused and the most, I guess, intensive from a classroom instruction perspective. But then we, we get to communication and you'll see that here's where we talk about formal and informal communication channels, making sure that we have consistency. The third, the third topic is encourage, reinforce, engage, and inform. So really taking a look at how are we making sure that people are getting information? And if they're not, what are we doing then to be responsive to that? And, and how are we then coming back to the table saying, this isn't working, what other ideas do we have, right? You'll see all of our smores go out from both the secondary principal and the elementary principal. Our community ed director has talked about the, the letters that have gone out, the brochures that are there. We try to have, I try to have a, a letter in each of the brochures. Those brochures get into every, every household within the school district, right? So how are we making sure that that communication is robust? And it's not just targeted toward social media, right? I know that's probably our, it's, it's a, it's certainly a go-to, but it is not, it's not the end-all, be-all, right? And then one of the things that we do try to do is analyze the usage data. I know Matt Dickhausen was, was really, he had very, I guess, robust reporting on how many views like our live stream had. Those are some things that we can get from Jacob, Jacob Bertram and Jeremy Schmitz, who are doing the live stream now to kind of track this winter and spring, what that, what that looks like. Because I think that's, it's important for us to know how much those platforms are accessed by our community members, okay? So then the final role that we have is our fiscal, fiscal allocation and financial, financial stewardship. So you're gonna see implement appropriate fund balance expectations for the district. The district set the policy of 12 and a half percent, I believe it is. And that was, that was revised, I think, just, just before I arrived. And so that's been something that we've talked about. You'll see that we've talked about, and if you look back over the course of, of meetings, we've talked about making budget decisions around the strategic plan and having focus there and, and making sure that we're balanced. You know, the, the, I guess, letter B is complete annual budgeting process that delivers a balanced budget in alignment with the strategic plan. That's, we've been working toward that and we've been working to be balanced versus in a, in a deficit budget, right? One of the things that I will also speak to is the annual program review to ensure equity and resource allocation and prioritization. So we've talked a, a number of times about what are we doing to make sure that our families do not have a, a financial barrier to participating and be active throughout our school district, right? Yes, we're still here. So administratively, we've had extensive conversation about, are we requiring people to ask for a waived fee? Are we requiring people to take steps to, to, to essentially say, I can't afford this for my child? And I think, I, I would like to reassure the board that this is something our administrative team has a really solid pulse on, that I think our students are participating and they're participating at a high level because they're able to. And, and finances are not a barrier for our, our activity participation. Now, we've, have we gone so far as to have a sliding fee? No, but I think, I don't know that it's necessary at this point. We continue to look at it and we continue to watch to see, you know, this, this kiddo maybe participated last year and they're not out this year. Does anybody, you know, what's going on? Are, we have adults within our system that have relationships with kids to know what's going on and, and make sure that those, that finances, for example, are not a barrier for kids to participate in activities, okay? So those are a couple of the, I guess, those are the, the goal earmarked for the strategic plan for number three. So with that, I just will draw your attention to the strategic plan tracker. And over the course of, so this is something that, that we brought forward really as a, a method to kind of keep, like, how are we gonna know what's happening? And what's gonna be, how are we measuring if we're making progress in some of these areas, right? So you'll see on the strategic plan tracker, the first date that we, I believe we started doing this was on January 11th of 2022. And then you could click through the different tabs on the bottom. So most recently, we're gonna take a look at today's date of 4/11/2023, okay? So really, if you wanna see the movement that happened from where we started in the fall, you could click on the 9/27/22 tab. And then you can see the areas that have moved. And either they have moved from exploration to planning to implementation to the blue column of incorporated. Or you can see areas that have been added in as it's time for us to explore these next areas on the strategic plan. So in our, the, the areas that are in blue on the incorporated and integrated, those have been moved from the last one. If they're a different color, it because, it means they've changed columns, okay? So it's just a visual way to kind of keep track of that movement as well. So you'll see that we did a cultural, culturally responsive staff development after our World Cafe last spring. We had a, an operating referendum campaign. We've continued the work with our buildings and grounds consultation. Well, we learned and we, we found that it didn't work for us to share that position. And so now here we are with our, our buildings and grounds position, okay? Social media usage and, and data, that's ongoing. It's something that we've been looking at, we, we pull from, but that's incorporated and integrated into our daily functioning, okay? So items and implementation. So you'll see our seven mindsets, that's still, it's not green because it's been there and we've been working on it. Our school business partnership with Cold Spring, that's there as, as implementation because it continues to be a work in progress. This year, we didn't have any students that were part of that process, but it's not, it's not something. So it's not something that we're gonna say we're not gonna deal with and we're not gonna be a part of any longer. But we're not ready to say that it's fully integrated because we don't have heavy, heavy participation in it yet, okay? Our letters professional development, that's in implementation. It's not incorporated yet because we're still in the, we're still in the process. PBIS system-wide, so our middle school is just now, they went through their training. And the middle school is going to be working through, what does that look like? PBIS is a two-year process to be trained, come back, and implement. So those teams are working at the secondary level so that they are incorporated in the same way that the elementary is. So when you hear Mrs. Akerson or you see online that there are bark outs at the elementary, that's all part of their PBIS initiative. It's part of the positive behavior intervention supports of catching kids doing good things, right? So that's, it's now, are we gonna take middle schoolers and give them a piece of paper and say, here's your bark out? Probably not. It's not gonna be the same type of an initiative, right? But we, we have to look at what works for those middle schoolers to drive their positive behavior, okay? You'll take a look at the items and planning, the embedding SEL through all grade levels. So again, this is the seven mindsets. While we have seven mindsets that's been, it has been available to all, it is not currently embedded in all grade levels because we have, we've had participation that's been optional versus having it just, this is the expectation of curriculum, right? So that's something that we're still in the planning mode to find out how does that look? And what would that look like for all classrooms? The activities facility faculty, the, so Ken talked more about the softball, the track, the football field. So now that we have our strategic, our, our operating referendum moved through, we have an ability to look at our, our funding more long-term and start tackling some of those projects, okay? So that has moved from exploration into planning, okay? So you'll see items and exploration, so creating locally emotional and physical wellness standards. So I put that on because we haven't done that yet, okay? The portrait of a graduate work, it's on there because we haven't done that yet. You'll see the shared services network administration. I'm, I'm gonna point out that that actually was moved down from item in, in, in planning and implementation to exploration. Because we had a shared position, we've lost that position. We've gotta continue to look at what's gonna work for that, right? So you'll see movement across the strategic plan tracker around the initiatives and the things that have been happening over the course of the year, okay? So are there questions that you have for me about the strategic plan or the strategic plan tracker?
I guess I was looking at, cause I, I reviewed all of this before the meeting, you know, I think you presented it out. But I guess I was looking at more of something that was linear. So I could take a look at something and I could see, okay, so you said this is a three-year plan to, to implement all of this. I see all of this stuff that, that you've put in there or however it was, was put in. On the other sheet, where at in that three-year plan are you gonna do something? I, I guess some of what, what you had mentioned here, it may be something where it's, it's cherry picking. I think maybe it's time to do this now or maybe it's time to do that now. And then try to see if it'll work through the system. But I, I don't know, I just, like you said, I, I was actually looking for something that was linear. So no, year one is this, year two, and then year three, and then as things were put into that, then what was your check and adjust period? Where were you at as far as having to go back and make changes and stuff? And then when is it, when is it fully implemented?
Yep, so I'll, I'll ask you to go back to strategies and tactics because that has start dates and it has ideal completion dates. So those are some guide points that I think have been in there as kind of where, where we would like to start and where the, the timeframe would be to ideally end. In full transparency, Gerald, we had a transition between superintendents in the middle of a strategic plan. I really worked hard to pick it up and carry it forward and run with as many pieces of it as possible. But there are some components of it that I didn't, I, I needed, I did not push forward at a certain time, right? There are some things I think we also have to be responsive to from a staff capacity. Our staff are, are deep into the Letters Initiative. Does it make sense to implement, bring in wellness standards and have them work through wellness standards at the same time? I don't know, right? So I, I hear what you're saying and suggesting, but that's kind of why I think it is a little bit more fluid.
Oh, and, and I think we're both thinking probably maybe the same thing. Because as I looked at this and you mentioned it was a three-year plan and I saw everything that, that is trying to be crammed into three years, I thought about the fact of, then how is that going to be done based on the people that, that are, the ones that have to execute that, the teachers? And, and so I, I'm just wondering if maybe a three-year plan, I think this is great, I mean, we have, we need to have a strategic plan so we're never gonna go in the future. But maybe a three-year plan is just, is, is too aggressive. And look at maybe trying to push out some of that.
Sure.
So, so that our teachers do have, you know, time to learn, time to try to implement. Because they're the ones that are gonna tell us whether or not this is actually working, you know? And it's gonna be through either them, you know, specifically stating that, you know, I'm having some issues with this. And/or we see that at the end of the year, that maybe those students that were in fifth grade aren't ready to meet the sixth grade. And it has nothing really to do with the teacher, it's just that maybe this wasn't the right tool that we gave them. So I'm just thinking that, that maybe this three-year is just too compressed.
Well, and, and I, I hear, I hear that. And I, I also think if you look logistically at June of 2023, there is a lot that's not done.
Yep.
And, and you look, go ahead, Louis.
When I, when I looked at it, I didn't ever view our strategic plan to be a three-year drop dead, dead island on anything. The idea was to have it there. And over the years, it's been kind of a, something that was there. We were putting all of this together, then something shifts. We have a referendum that doesn't pass, okay? And everybody likes the can, the word kick can down the road. If you don't have it down somewhere, when the, the can stops at the end of the road and you get to it, you still have it on your plan. Most of the dates I see are kind of ideal and it was just, it's, a strategic plan is a plan that should move and shift. It may move longer, something happens faster, but that's kind of what it is. It's not, I never looked at any of these to be on a three-year basis.
No, I think these dates that we see here should be moving.
Sure.
You know, the, well.
No, you can't, no, I, I disagree with that, Rick. If you keep moving those days, I, I understand maybe what you're saying, but then, then you get the can being kicked down.
No, no, every, every year you take a look at it and say, okay, we accomplished these things. These things we didn't accomplish, okay? We couldn't because now we move that up another year.
Okay, that's what you mean.
I'm not saying move the whole thing.
No, no.
It's just like, when I set goals for myself for a year, if I accomplish two out of five someday, that, I just celebrate that. We celebrate what we have accomplished and then we look at what we didn't accomplish. And then we start looking at what do we need to do now.
So that's why I don't understand why we don't see something linear. So all, all of that is laid out and we start laying in where we think that's going to be based off of those ones that are gonna have to execute that plan. So if you have something that's linear, you can see four years from now, we're kind of looking at this. Is that something we need to move to the, to the left or is it something we can push out to the right?
So Gerald, let me give you the best example of that.
Yep.
Is last, so when our letters implementation began, they covered four units in the first year. That was last school year.
Right.
We heard administratively, that's not feasible to do this year.
Yep.
So they've covered two units this year, okay? And with that, it was intended to be responsive to the individuals who are going through the training
Yep.
and implementing, right? So that is what this, what we are doing in response to this plan.
Oh, you know, no, absolutely, I, I understand that.
I'm not understanding how linear, that's not linear.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is I'm looking at this sheet of paper and I see a date here, I see a date here, I say we implemented this here. I'm not seeing that, that, that pork board over there where I can see that that's been laid in there. I can see exactly when it started, when it stopped, when we have some check and adjust in there and when we have full implementation and we're moving forward with it.
So essentially, you, you, this spreadsheet with dates is what you're, you're thinking. Cause I, I think this spreadsheet, at least in me- So essentially, you, you this spreadsheet with dates is what you're, you're thinking, because I, I think this spreadsheet, at least to me, as you follow along and now, granted. You know, you, you, I've only been on the board for a few months, we helped develop the strategic plan and I followed along for the last two or three years. Uh, you know, I see what you're saying and and I get that and that's essentially what I see in the spreadsheet just without the planned execution implementation date. It, that makes sense, because I look at, we have items exploration, these are like holistically great uh things that we want to see sometime in the future, but. There may not be a planned start, there may not be a planned implementation, because these are just things that might be great, then we have a item of the planning, we're getting a little bit more serious about these. And we might start putting some start dates behind it, like start thinking about some, some finish, and then the implementation is letters training, we said the June of twenty twenty three. But that's not going to happen, so you know, so theoretically, what you're seeing, the corkboard would be this spreadsheet with. Idealistic dates of, of when they started or.
Yeah, and and not necessarily the idealistic dates, but but something that's out there so we have a vision of looking at, saying we're coming up on this.
Yep.
Where, or is this something we need to start planning to take a look at, uh to start moving forward with it? Uh, or, and 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 the reason I say that, and 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 I, I don't want to say I apologize.
No.
I've built strategic plans, I've looked at strategic plans for years. And I saw twenty-year, thirty-year plans on how we were going to do something and and I can see things out there.
Myself as well, in the private business sector, it's really different than the public education sector as what the. The vision I've gotten over the last four plus years of being on the board, the, the, the private sector and what we look at and think about for strategic plan and plans of. Building business success versus this moving manipulated like district that is constantly getting things fluctuated and changed. We can't have, we can't have a financial plan for ten years from now, right? Because we don't know what our referendum is going to be doing and what our education costs are going to be. But a, but a business plan, you can kind of make a little bit different. I, I don't disagree with you in the sense that, you know, what you're saying on the, the linear and the things, but that. To simplify it and and simplify what I think education, what we could do within the district is to kind of have. When we have things that go items and implementation, what was the start date? What was the ideal finish date, you know, and where are we at today? Like, you know, what's that progress bar of of implementation with that? Because the things in item exploration may never get looked at for, talked about again for a year or two because we're just, we're just too busy to start that, but we don't want to forget about them. So we're going to keep them in the spreadsheet because it's, it's something we really want to focus on in the future, but it's just not. It's not realistic to even start communicating about or putting plans together about.
I, and I don't have a problem with this and we need to have both of them, so they're out there.
Yeah.
But, but I, again.
It'd be, it'd be matter just kind of what that linear view would be like for you, you know what I mean?
Right, because you still need this.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this is your document of keeping things going as to, yes, we did start this and yes, we did end this.
Mm-hmm.
But but just to actually see how long it is going to take. And and I think, I think it's a perfect example with uh, you know, what you had mentioned as far as, what was it, the letters or, you know? The, the teachers got into this and realized, you know, and nobody knew that, so so that way you can start pushing that out to say, okay. You know, we need to give the teachers this much time, so they're done with this program as far as studying or whatever it is, they're certified for it. Now let's see, how long will it take as far as the implementation, you know?
Five months, exactly, right.
Yep, if I recall, we, when we did this, we wanted to be as flexible as possible, but honestly, we didn't have this all figured out.
Yep.
Um, we're kind of learning on the go of how to make this move for us, because what um. A few of us have experienced is you do the strategic plan and about a year, it ends up on the shelf in the superintendent's office. And about three years later, oh man, we should have a strategic plan, then you do it all over again. What we're trying to do and we have learning ourselves to do is to have something that we can move and flow with. Where we know that if we have this plan, referendum uh doesn't go through, then it goes through at less dollars than we were originally thinking. All of that has a effect on it along with um programs that we get that take longer.
Right.
But we're in the learning stages. Um, the questions you have probably are good questions the rest of the public may have on us, but. We're just trying to figure this out, so we have a living strategic plan. That we can move and flow with, that was my understanding of what we are trying to do.
So 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 one of those things, because Bruce, you're absolutely right, you don't want the thing to sit on the shelf and collect dust and years later you realize, oh, we have this, let's see if we've ever done anything with it. Is to have that linear plan put on the, on the wall, so you, you're looking at it every day or whatever that is. And you know, okay, hey, it's June now and these are things that we need to start planning for. Uh, because it also helps lay out what we're going to do in, in, you know, as far as a, a, an agenda like this. Understanding there's going to be priorities that are going to change, you know, as far as referendums, bond measures and things like that. And things are going to have to come to a, to a halt and then we need to refocus, you know, as far as priorities and energies, I understand all of that.
And then, Janelle, you've been bringing that to us quite a bit over the last two years, as it kind of moved and flowed.
Yep.
Do we have, or that figured out perfectly, I don't know, it's just. In my time on the board, we had ideas that were so great that just all of a sudden got forgotten because. Uh, like our process and what was going on kind of changed, but it wasn't that it was dead in the water forever. We would want to resurrect it and we're trying to track all that. So that boards of the future don't have to reinvent the wheel over and over again.
Right.
So there should be, it seems to me, at least time once a year where we just sit down and really go through this again and look at. Maybe there's some things we should drop, maybe there's some things that we've have come up that we want to implement and and we lean on the administration to kind of help us with that.
Yep.
Because we don't have the ins and outs of that.
Absolutely. And and I don't know if if once a year uh is is enough.
Well, I'm, I'm, once a year where we really just sit down and just spend the whole two hours.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We don't want to be spending two hours on this every time we meet.
Oh, absolutely not, no, but 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 maybe something, Rick.
We've, we've been getting refreshed every couple of meetings, I think, over the last.
Well, even though I know Janelle's brought it up and she's mentioned it, you know, throwing it up there. Uh, but you know, you know, may, maybe, you know, beginning of the school year, hey, this is kind of where we're at. And maybe midway through the school year, yeah, we're still tracking and move on, like you said, two hours.
But we've already spent more time on this tonight than we've had a lot of previous, which is good, I'm not saying we shouldn't, we needed to do this tonight.
We needed to because we have new board members.
Right, yeah.
And understand we had.
Well, we need it because we got old board members that don't.
I would think the doors are open for suggestions on anything, because we're just trying to.
Right.
Create a living document that can kind of move and flow as we get things done. We may have stuff that we have a projection date on and for whatever happened. It just clicked and it happened faster than we anticipated, other times it may be delayed. And that was always my impression, we were more just of a living document.
I think the other piece, and I know Ricky, you're going to ask about time and we need to kind of wrap this up, so. Um, I I think the other, the the timing in my mind um for us to to do this deep dive is probably like a July timeframe. Um, because this really should, the the hesitation I have in just taking things off and and. And saying, well, we don't want to do this anymore, so at one point in time, there was, there was committed effort between community members, parents, students. Staff to say, these are our priorities, right? So as as administration changes, as board members change, we still have, this is continuity to the work that's been happening. So while I think there's a lot of value in stepping back and saying, okay, reality, what what is feasible this year? We can do that, um and, you know, this came up maybe as part of our. Um, part of our student survey, should we put that in? Okay, let's, let's add in some things, but I I really think it's, it's, it's revisions. Versus full revamping multiple times a year. That's, I I think because that helps give structure to the work that happens at the board level. So Rick, I know um, looking at times.
Yeah, let's, we're going to skip C and we're going to move to D.
Okay.
Quest for information and route table. This is an opportunity for board members to ask questions. Anyone? If not, we're going to adjourn and take a break until seven thirty when we will open and close meeting, or open and then to close meeting, so.
Okay.
We don't need to have an adjournment, right, we're just, we'll take a break.